April 6th meeting of the Board of Selectmen postponed from Thursday night, April 4th. The first item on our agenda this morning is a public hearing on the acceptance of a highway grant in the amount of $29,421.48 for the mobile data terminal equipment in the Police Department. Chief, would you like to explain this, please?
I don't know where to stand. I don't have a podium. I don't want to be behind everyone. Let me just come up there. Sorry, Cara. I want to take your seat. Just don't want to make everyone stand or turn around. So this is something that I had spoken with the Selectmen about in the past. I had applied originally for highway safety mobilization money, which is basically grants for us to perform certain traffic enforcement, speed, DWI, distracted driving, texting. And that amount was originally $8,200. But because we applied for and were granted that amount of money, we were then eligible to apply for subsequent grants through the state, through the Department of Safety for equipment. And so ultimately, I applied for and was granted money for new mobile data terminals or computers in the cruisers. And so there is some match with that. They would cover up to 75% of some of that equipment. So that's why there's an amendment for what the Town of New London was granted from $8,200 to $29,421.48. Again, there is a match requirement, but I believe that I'm going to be able to absorb that in my operating budget, perhaps delaying or putting into the next fiscal year some of the other projects that we might look at. So I think I'll have some room in the operating budget to absorb that match requirement.
So are there any comments or questions from the public on this item?
I should tell you exactly, I suppose, how many there's going to be. There will be four cruisers that will be outfitted with this new equipment. And so those are for the four marked patrol cars that we have. So like my cruiser and the detective pickup truck, those will not have mobile data terminals in them because the requirement is that the cruiser that this equipment is going into must be used for primarily for patrol procedures 50% or more of the time. And so that's why there's only going to be four cruisers that will be outfitted with this equipment.
Thank you, Chief. If not, I will close the public hearing. Any questions from the board? I'll entertain a motion to accept the highway grant?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
So anyway, good morning, everyone, and thank you for, to the town staff for getting the roads cleared so quickly on the last 48 hours. And things look fantastic out there. So Kim, if you'll pass the word along. And Chief, also, will you tell your officers how much we appreciate their efforts during this storm? Just to set the stage a bit before we get into our formal agenda today, it really does mark the beginning of a concerted effort over the next several months to address the needs and aspirations of all of us as residents into the rest of this year and beyond. And so among those things that we're going to be focusing on, just to be clear right from the beginning, is first of all, the completion of the Water Main project on Main Street, which we hope will start very soon. Second of all, obviously, to develop the detailed proposal mandate at town meeting for the future of the Police and Communications Facility, either new or renovated. Constructing a spending plan, both operating budget and capital investments for the fiscal '26 and beyond that balances reality with taxes. And then importantly, and sometimes this takes more time than one might realize, monitoring and impacting, and to the extent possible, impacting events outside our direct purview, including state mandated changes to education funding. Bebe's spending a lot of time on that at this point. To zoning regulations, zoning regulations are going to be a major issue undoubtedly in the next several months with things that are going on at the state and the results of the recent voting on our proposed zoning amendments. And also, the significant construction projects that are likely to start along County Road this summer or fall. And then, of course, all the daily workings of the thriving municipality, including traffic, speed, waste, energy, mobility, facility, upkeep, beach usage, fireworks, all the things of recreation we were just talking about. So the Selectmen have already mapped out our biweekly meeting times through December. They're posted on the board. And we hope that many of you, it's good to see so many here this morning, and some is obviously a result of staying over from Putnam's presentation, but having you all here. And we hope that you will continue to come, not just at crunch time, so that we can have a community forum every two weeks for the things that we're planning to work on. We've also already set aside Friday, October 25th, for a day-long discussion of the fiscal year '26 budget. And we hope that if you have your calendars out, that you will mark October 25th right now to come and be here with us for a day-long discussion of budgets. And so we really only have two things that we want to ask of you this morning and going forward. One is that you please come and join with us as we govern, not just leave us alone and then come and see us the week before town meeting. And second of all, in every aspect of our life, if we could treat each other with civility and thoughtfulness, that will really make things go a lot more smoothly. So that having said, we've heard from Recreation that was going to be the first item on our agenda on Thursday night, and we consolidated, and you've heard that this morning. We've already done the grant acceptance, and now we've got a couple of committees to form this morning, or start to form at least, that we've promised that we were going to do. But before we get to that, are there any public comments or things that are not on the agenda? Colin?
Thank you. Good morning. Regarding the Police Station Project Management material on the current topics tab of the town website, in the interest of transparency and full disclosure, can the Select Board make available four additional links, excuse me, to make more easily available to the public those previous published documents that can be an important reference to those interested in both understanding of those previous findings and in the evaluation of any new findings against the assumptions and findings of that previous work? And the four links I would appreciate being added would be the 2018 Harriman Report, the Buildings and Facilities Committee Fourth Report to the Selectmen dated September 24th, 2020, the BFC Subcommittee on New London Police Department, Bukea Building and Storm and Building Analysis, dated March 2021, and the Report to the Building and Facilities Committee, Findings and Conclusions of the Police Station Site Review Subcommittee, dated March 22, 2022.
Kim, do you understand what he's asking?
Yeah.
Is that possible, to put them on there?
I certainly think so. I think some of those things are already there. It must just be the one-
No, I would like to put them as links on the Project Management tab. So when people are looking at the current tab, and they see the Project Manager, they can click on those links and read the reports. And I'd be happy to provide that information.
No reason why?
That'd be great. Thank you.
Any other public comments of things that are not on our agenda? Okay, seeing none. The first-
Chief Cobb does-
Did I miss one?
I have one. Kim, shall I speak to them about the Phase 3 now? I know it wasn't on the agenda, and I apologize. I got this email after the agenda was sent out yesterday, so I'm sorry for that. But I do have an update on Phase 3, the repeater on Mount Sunapee project that we're going through. I had come to you a few weeks ago, and you had graciously agreed to accept the grant. But there's been an update in the amount. It was originally about $135,000, I believe, in change. And that number is updated to $103,000. So I have a grant revision that I would like the board to consider. It is less. This project, again, has been going on for several years, and I don't know precisely where that $135,000 came from. That was submitted by our field rep at the time. So after I came to the board, I looked at all the documents again, and I said this just, I wanted to double-double check, and I'm glad I did now because it's a lesser amount. So at your February 22nd meeting, I believe it was, there was language in there that, and you had voted to accept the terms of the Emergency Management Performance Grant as presented. Nothing else has changed besides the amount. In the amount of, it was $135,287, and today that amount is $103,000 for the Communication Tower repeater project. Further, and this was, I think, the language that you had read, Bebe, that the board acknowledged that the total cost of the project would be $206,000, in which the town was responsible for a 50% match. And we can have that in soft match. So I have been able to accumulate that already, and I've already submitted that to the state. So today, I guess I'd be looking for you to perhaps amend your original approval of that to the amount as reflected in the revised grant agreement of $103,000.
Any discussion? I'll entertain a motion to revise the grant amount to $103,000.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And further, I feel like I'm asking a lot today. I'm sorry. If you could authorize now Bill Helm, Chair of the Board, to sign grant documents in accordance with this project. Previously, Janet had been authorized. She was the chair at the February meeting. So perhaps if you could consider that, please.
Would somebody like-
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
All right.
State is very specific in what they're asking, so.
Peter?
We on? Yes. Just a quick pitch. I'm just a retired businessman, but I had to write my first grant request for the Housing Commission, and we're still working on that. But I was amazed at how much work it takes to write a grant, to know about them, to find them, to be in the faces of the people who grant them, you know, the state and various people. So I just wanted to say how impressed I am with Emily just today, talking about three different grants and the best practices that she's demonstrating at the police force. I just think it's really impressive. And I think of the hours it took for me to write a grant, and I can't imagine what she's doing. So thanks to Emily.
Absolutely.
You know, Peter, practice makes perfect. So maybe you could do two or three more for the Housing Commission?
[laughing]
Any other public comments of things that are not on the agenda? Okay, moving on then to old business. First item is the formation of a Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Bebe, you want to take that on, please?
Sure. So after months of discussing this sidewalk committee, which started as the idea started as a sidewalk committee with a request from Bob Bowers to the Budget Committee, as you know, to ask the Board of Selectmen to create a committee dedicated to the sidewalks in town, particularly because the sidewalks currently on Main Street are in pretty tough shape. And we've been putting money in a reserve account for a couple of years in anticipation of the project to improve the sidewalks. But we've been holding off pending the Main Street Water Main project. I brought the request to the Board of Selectmen back in December. During our conversation, the three of us talked about the need not only for a committee to focus on sidewalks, but also on the mobility issues in town in general for pedestrians and bicyclists. If you look at the master plan, it states there's a growing concern around both pedestrian and cyclist safety in the Main Street and Newport Road corridor. The master plan survey reports that, quote, "mobility enhancements to sidewalks, trails, and bike lanes were a top priority." And recommendations in the master plan state that we should, quote, "encourage the continued maintenance of bicycle and pedestrian amenities while exploring additional improvements where appropriate." So in light of all of that, the board felt that this committee should be called, well, we went around and around, but hopefully we've landed on the name Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee for a couple of reasons. One, the focus should be on the first recommendation from the master plan to encourage continued maintenance of bicycle and pedestrian amenities, as well as explore continued improvements. I would define bicycle and pedestrian amenities as sidewalks, walking trails, crosswalks, bike paths, and the possibility of bike lanes. And two, there are many towns in the state with a Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee already. Some are subcommittees of a Public Transportation Committee, which is something we may think of forming in the future. But in an effort to remain uniform with other towns, I propose we call it the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. This might allow us, and particularly Russ Moore, who's really taking this on, and I really appreciate all the time he's put into it already, to collaborate and share ideas with other towns, as well as with the Upper Valley Regional Planning Commission. So, but we are asking the committee members of this committee to focus short term on the sidewalks, since that was originally the idea behind forming this committee, and then long term, looking at the way we can make this a much more walkable and easily accessible town for all of us that live here. So we have, we've hammered out, which I think Kim may have sent to you. If you're not, I've got copies of it. We've hammered out the proposal. Do you want me to read through this? The purpose in all of this? Do you want me to read it?
I've read it. Have you, Janet?
Yeah, I've read it. I only have one question about it. What statute? Why is that included? What's the purpose of that statute?
It has to do with the forming of committee and having, Kim knows the statute.
It's the right-to-know law that was mentioned. Russ wanted to include the fact that the committee would observe the right-to-know law.
Okay.
Which all committees have to, but I think he wanted to point it out to make it clear to the members.
Okay. Thank you.
So Bebe, I think it sounds to me like we're in agreement with what you and Russ have hammered out here in terms of the purpose of the committee and the membership. For the purpose of the public, the membership is going to consist of seven people, and they may have a couple of alternates. And then basically, as just with Janet's questions, can operate within the normal rules of how a committee should operate. Is that right?
Correct.
And the purpose is what you were just describing to us?
Correct.
So having said that, I guess first of all, we might entertain a motion to establish this committee.
Right. So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, at this point, do you have proposals for membership?
We do have a list of members. I don't know if Russ wants to speak at all this morning.
Well, maybe we should get the membership established first, and then what's proposed, and then let Russ and others speak.
Okay. So we have a list of 10 names. So how are we going to do this?
Well, I think, you know, first of all, we can only have nine.
Yeah.
And I have a list in front of me that you provided. And one of the names, I think, is somebody who's not been as active in town, so perhaps we eliminate that name.
Okay.
And then the other nine, and then let the committee sort itself out in terms of who wants to be the alternates. And so I assume all of these people on this list have volunteered.
Correct.
And we have volunteer forms for all of them.
Yep. We have volunteer forms for all of them. Correct.
So I don't think there should be any problem. They're being willing to accept. But why don't you nominate these people?
Okay.
And then we'll have a discussion.
Okay. Which one are we not going to nominate?
Number seven.
Okay. So I'm going to read nominate as a group, each, read all the names down?
Yes. For record, yep.
So I am nominating for membership of the Bike and Pedestrian Committee, Ed Conduct, Donald Everly, Russ Moore, Emily Campbell, John Booton, and forgive me if I pronounce the names incorrectly, Judith Ferreira, Woody Candide, Grant Smith, and Erica Brown.
Do I have a second for those nominations?
Second.
Okay. Are there any discussion with the public about the formation of the committee, and those nine people being the initial members of the committee to be sorted out in terms of one, two, and three-year terms, et cetera, all similar to what we do with the formation of any committee?
I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but I'm just wondering, given the discussion we had earlier with the Citizens Advisory relative to Recreation Committee, I understand a bit, but I've not seen the full scope of what this committee is established to do. But I'm wondering if there could be some language that asks them to work in collaboration with Recreation Committee. It would be really nice to see some bike safety fairs for both adult riders in this town, as well as children. Possibly with the chief, we could, on a Saturday, close off part of Main Street to have a bike fair around bike safety and those kinds of things. I think that would be a great event to have. So just want to make a plug for that.
Excellent, Nancy. And we didn't read all of this, but the membership of the committee is formed to work with the Selectmen, the Planning Board, and the Recreation Commission on things. So other comments or questions from the public? Colin?
I would only suggest if there's a gentleman or a woman who has not been deeply involved in the town, maybe making that person an alternate. So as not to include people with new ideas would be great. But again, I'm not familiar with the person, but rather than excluding one, maybe that would be a good compromise.
Well, our problem is we have more names than we have volunteers. And so I think the thought at this particular point was to start with the people who have actively engaged, and it's not to exclude, but to, we're picking nine out of 10. Okay, so I entertain a motion to approve the appointment of the nine names that Bebe read to this committee.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So I would say, go forth, meet. Russ, you may be the one who wants to convene this group, and take it from there. And when you're organized, and come back and let us know more of the details of how you're set up, and who the two alternates are going to be. And then we will revise our vote to accommodate the setting of the terms and the, who the alternates are, and so on. And if any one of the nine people decides they don't want to do this after meeting with you, then we'll go back to the list, as Colin suggests, and see where we are. But we had to somehow do something this morning to get down to nine. Thanks. Okay, moving right along, the second committee, which we've talked about forming, and we're in the formation part of a new business year for the Board of Selectmen, is a Police Station Committee. You may recall that back in the fall, when we first agreed to hire Colliers and to ask them to work with us on the project that's now been agreed that we will proceed with town meeting, one of the recommendations was that we should have an advisory committee to work with Colliers and with the Selectmen on the activities over the next several months. And so we've been trying to figure out how to do that. And I think the first thing we wanted to do was determine whether or not any of us were going to be on that committee. And at least, I would like to begin by suggesting that we not, just as we are not members of other committees, I think this committee is going to come to us. And I don't think any of us need to be on that committee. But I don't know how the two of you feel about that.
No, I agree.
I agree, too.
Okay. So we will not try to appoint one of us to the committee. And the second question then is, how do we go about forming this committee? And what I've suggested to you all is that each of us come up with some names, and that we can have a period of time when we'll try to form this committee, but not necessarily get it all done this morning. But if any of us have names to recommend, we can begin to form the committee. The committee can begin to take shape and meet with Tony, because I think time is of the essence to move along with this project, because obviously by the fall, we're going to want to have a fairly concrete set of proposals for the town, as we agreed at town meeting. So I have, to start, do you have any suggestions, either one of you, this morning?
Can I just ask a quick question, though, first?
Sure.
Maybe Kim might want to talk a little bit about the expectations for this committee, how often it might meet, those types of things.
Sure. These committees are obviously very helpful to the Board of Selectmen because they'll be meeting with the architect that's hired, and also with Colliers, who's our project manager. So this group I see as working with those groups, and also with the Police Department and other stakeholder, other department heads that may have input on various tasks that are going to be assigned to this group. The first thing that they're going to do is look at the proposals that have been submitted for the hiring of the architect, the firm that's going to actually get us the prices, what is this building potentially going to look like. This group will be meeting with Colliers and the firm, will be giving input about the town, things that are important to the citizens of the town. They'll bring that perspective. Hopefully, some of the members will also have expertise in both law enforcement, building, and some of them may just be citizens who have lived here and know what the town wants. So this group is going to be helping you, also going out into the community and keeping people up to date. One of the things we've heard is that people aren't really aware of what's going on if they can't come to Selectmen's meeting. This group will be yet another way to get information out.
Okay.
I think, as the project evolves, I think what the committee does will evolve, too. And I think, you know, my expectation is that we'll have regular interaction with the committee, and they may ask us questions, and we may ask them questions. It's much more fluid, I think, than some of the other committees that act somewhat independently of the Board.
Okay.
So perhaps one other thing before back to asking you all questions, that was on my mind, is whether or not the Police Department should be represented on this committee. Anybody have any thoughts on that?
I think, yeah, my answer is yes. And I think in the past, on these, the Chief Cobb was a member of one or two of these subcommittee meetings. And I would ask Chief Cobb's opinion, but my first reaction is, yes, I think we should have a representative from the Police Department on this committee.
And Janet, how do you feel about that?
I do, too. And I have one person in mind, but I, maybe Chief Cobb has a different person. So let's hear his yes.
Yes. Nice timing. Thank you for appearing.
Thank you, yes. We would certainly appreciate a seat at the table, certainly because we are one of the largest stakeholders. We'll be using the building every day, no matter what it looks like. So in the past, certainly, I have been a part of these. I would offer to the board that perhaps my perspective is good for the community to attend the meetings, but maybe not necessarily for me to be the voting member. And so I would recommend a member of our department be a person of that committee, a voting member, so to speak. And I could be there to supplement whatever that department member might be looking for, to supplement what the committee might have questions on, or just anyone in the community. So that would be my offer to the board and for you to consider, is that I would be attending these committee meetings regularly, but not necessarily as a voting member, more of an ex officio member. And then another department member, I would ask to take on the role of being a part of the committee voting.
And I think, Chief, it's important that that person be a resident of the town. This is a residents committee, so-
Yes, yes. I certainly have a person in mind, so-
To that respect, I think Lieutenant Keith would be obvious person.
That would be my recommendation as well. He is a resident of this community. He grew up in this community. Certainly, he is the, one of the lieutenants at the Police Department. He is my, a person that I depend on greatly. He also oversees the dispatch center. So he has his finger on the pulse of a lot of the inner workings of the Police Department. And so I think that he would be a great choice to be assigned to this.
Well, and also, as a member of the school board, he has some understanding of what the schools' needs are in the town, so.
Yes. That has opened his eyes quite a bit to just the inner workings of things, his time on the school board. I have spoken to him about being assigned to this committee, and he is a willing participant. He's not being voluntold to do this, so he's willing to do it. So I think he would be a natural fit.
I agree.
So now back to either one of you. Do you have any other proposals this morning? I have a couple, but I don't know if either one of you do.
I have one at the moment, and that would be my husband.
Okay.
Jim Casey, just retired from 30-year law enforcement career. So if that would be okay with the two of you, if you don't think that would be a conflict of interest, he would be interested in being a member of the committee.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with that. I have spoken with several people, and they have not gotten back to me yet.
Me, too. I have a couple other feelers out as well.
Well, I have, in addition to both Jim and David, which I think are good at suggestions, I have spoken to three people who have expressed an interest in the committee, which I would like to have us think about this morning. One is Phil Sherman, who I think we all know is very involved in the reconstruction of this building, and has been intimately involved for several years in discussions around Bukea and this building and so on, and an excellent engineering background. Second one is Bruce Parsons, who many of you also know as a longtime resident of New London, has a design and architectural background, and has expressed an interest in doing this. And the third is Jeff Hollinger, who is a longtime resident of the town, who's served on the Planning Board, has been chairman of the Osborne-Sargent Land Trust, and is now currently chairman of the hospital, so brings a wide range of understanding of activities in the town. So I would, this morning, like to suggest that we appoint, as a beginning group, Phil Sherman, Bruce Parsons, Jeff Hollinger, Jim Casey, and David Keith to the Police Advisory Committee.
Okay. I agree. So moved.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Phil? Phil? Oh, sorry.
So I realize that's now more than half the committee, which is fine. And I have no issues with any members that have been promoted in this. I just want to go on record and state that this has been a long, rather contentious discussion for quite a period of time. People have come at this from very many different points of views. And it's been publicly stated that if you don't agree with what the Board has wanted to do, we would not include your voice in any of this. I just want an assurance that we will have a balanced, equitable, thoughtful committee that comes forward and works on this. That's part of a democracy in having differences of opinion and being respectful of those differences of opinion and being able to state them and feel comfortable with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. And I think at least in the names that I've just read off, we have that. You may feel that Lieutenant Keith perhaps doesn't meet that criteria, but you heard from the chief as to why. And I think is, you might, eyes might go up about Jim Casey, but he has a huge career in law enforcement. And I think, knowing, as I've known Jim and BB, he's a free thinker. I don't think he's necessarily going to be biased by her involvement on the Board. Certainly, the other three gentlemen that I mentioned, I hope you would all say are not biased in one way or another at this point. And I particularly asked Phil Sherman when I talked to him about his bias on the other side of things because he was a member of the Building and Facilities Committee. He has his hand up, so I'll let him speak for himself.
We all have biases. I'm going to try to keep mine under control. But the reason I raise my hand, and Chief, please keep me honest here because memory is foggy. I believe it's the International Association of Chiefs of Police publishes a document, which I have not read in the last four years or so, on the process of dealing with a new station. And within that, it talks about an advisory committee. So I would suggest, I would hope that any decisions made this morning would just be kept loose enough that perhaps the chief and I could go back and dust off our copies and see what that says. I don't remember the details.
Thank you, Phil. That's a good way of putting it because rather than this morning or Thursday night when we first got started here, trying to cast something as a finished product like we did with the bike and pedestrian committee, we're trying to be fluid in the beginning. And forming this, we also want to be able to continue discussions with Colliers about their expectations of what this might involve also. So yes, I think we all three are committed following town meeting to making this an open and fluid process.
Bill, if I may, and I agree with Nancy's statement that there's been many looks at this over the years, but there's one element here that we haven't had in the past, and that is the guidance and advice of Colliers and Mr. DeLucio. So I think that's a really important piece and that will help guide these committee discussions to make sure that this is a fair, open, thoughtful process. So it's helpful to have someone, I think, from the outside come in and just continue to steer that ship in that direction that is truly desirable for everyone, I think, at this point.
Good, thank you, Chief. Okay, so I guess we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What I would suggest, if you will, Chief, is you would ask Lieutenant Keith perhaps to get the group together on an initial basis so that we can begin to meet with DeLucia and Tony and to begin to work on this issue of the design firms and so on. The selectmen have not been involved in that process. So we need some fairly immediate help to make sure that we understand who the candidates might be that they're recommending and any additions that we might want to make to that list. And so I think, again, the process will be that the selectmen will only act on the basis of recommendations from the committee, not unilaterally. So.
Yes.
So in the absence of a full formation of the committee, if Lieutenant Keith could just play that role, that'd be great.
Yes.
Thanks. Okay, moving along on our agenda, and I'm keeping my eye on the clock. It's a nice Saturday morning. I hope you all are thinking, incidentally, about whether you'd like to be having town meeting at this time in March, apropos the comment I made in my things in the Citizens Committee meeting. Kim, would you like to talk to us about the historic markers issue?
Sure. This issue was brought to me by Doug and Charlene Baxter, who went around town and, as you can see on the screen, took pictures of each of the 16 markers. I understand that these markers were put in to the town, starting, I think, 1963, one a year, all the way up to 1979 for the town's bicentennial. And so as you can see, they are in need of some sprucing up. Some of them are worse than others, but they do need some TLC. And what the Baxter's are suggesting is that we send these markers to some, someone who can repair them. They looked into the company that originally made them, this company in Ohio, and they estimate the cost to be $1,500 per sign. Cleaning, painting.
New poles.
And so that's, it'd be about $24,000 plus shipping. They were even thinking if anybody was going to Ohio, we could hand-deliver them. But there may be some other places. They also checked with the state of New Hampshire. The state has, also has these kinds of markers and restores them. Doug tells me that he saw one company that was $3,000 per marker. So we, there's work to be done as far as where these can be restored. But I guess the question first is, is the selectmen, is the Board interested in taking on this project? And should we go forward in finding places that could do the restoration work? Then the next question would be where we could find the money? Perhaps it's something that we budget in the next, the coming budget year. It also could be that people want to maybe adopt a sign and maybe we could have people actually pay to have a particular sign done. These are all ideas you can think about, I guess. But this morning, we want at least to get it out there. This is an issue. Is the Board interested in taking on the project? I know Janet and Adam and I went around town and checked them out. They're beautiful signs and it would be nice. And some of them may, we may want to move them. We noticed the one over by Buckland Beach. You really can't even see it. You'd have to be looking for it. So this would be a good time perhaps to not only bring them back to life, but also to figure out maybe new locations, you know, even a couple of feet so that people can actually see them.
Janet?
They're even shabbier than they look in these pictures, actually.
Is your bike on?
Yeah, the poles are, they're separating. So I think it definitely doesn't look attractive. You know, if we're going to take care of our fences by the cemeteries, we definitely need to refurbish these signs.
Since the signs are old, do they qualify as cemeteries?
I don't think so.
BB, do you have?
I don't think there's anything wrong with looking into different options, making a plan out. And, I mean, so over 16 years, they put these up. But I think with a goal of getting them, I mean, maybe we do a couple a year. We set out a phased-out plan so that we finish it by 2029, which is what, our 250th anniversary? Making it part of that whole thing, it might be a good idea. But I don't think there's anything wrong with investigating on fixing them up.
Right, yeah.
Have you talked to Jim Perkins about this?
The Baxter's tell me that he has been contacted about it, yes. He is aware of it.
I mean, I've struck the thing, we're always looking to who's going to do something as the Archives Committee might take this on as a project and come back with some recommendations for us. Does that make sense? Why don't we talk to Jim about that? Nancy, you want to do it?
Just one thought. I mean, I don't know that you want to go down this rabbit hole, but I would just suggest, like the one that's on the bottom middle, Primal Peoples, that perhaps someone needs to look at whether or not the language today needs to be updated and more politically correct. You have to go up. You're at Hominy Pot. It's below Hominy Pot. But anyways, just a suggestion, if you're going to go down that rabbit hole.
Well, that's, then you're talking about even bigger project, which is essentially.
Whole new sign.
Whole new sign. Yeah. Are you volunteering? To work on it?
I think there's other people in town. Marashia comes to mind, always includes their connections with the municipal communities that might be helpful.
Oh, even on the language, yeah. On the whole project?
No.
Darn it. So. Why don't, Kim, let's ask Jim to, if he'd be willing to marshal his forces and come back to us.
Well, I think the Baxter's are very interested in participating too. They're not looking, they're not looking to dump this on another group. They are interested in working on it.
Right, but we need some town help too. Okay, does that work all right for the two of you?
Yep.
Okay, fantastic. Next, we have some recommendations from the assessor on abatements and on our land use tax issue, land use change tax issue. Kim?
Yep. Each year, people have the ability to file an abatement for taxes. The chief assessor, Chris McAllister, has reviewed the ones submitted so far and she has come up with recommendations for several of them. Unless you see something that's incorrect or you have issues with any of them, I would recommend that you accept the recommendations of the chief assessor and deny the ones that she has submitted. And I think there's a couple approvals as well.
Right.
And there's also the land use change tax proposal. So BB, do you have any questions about any of these?
No, I do not.
Do you?
I don't.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve the recommendations of the assessor's department on both denials and approvals of abatement requests and also the land use change tax recommendation.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Sir, yes, Howard, wait for your mic.
No.
No.
No, not yet. We're not completed with the process yet. There'll be more.
So that is not one that was under consideration?
No.
Okay.
Not in this package.
Not in this package.
Where do you list those things?
They'll be listed on.
They'll be listed in the minutes.
Yep.
A reason why I'm here is because of the agenda item.
Oh.
But until this moment, I didn't know that King Solomon's request wasn't on the list. So.
Fair question. You're asking, how would you have known before you got here?
Correct.
Which ones we were considering?
Correct.
The short answer is you could have called the assessor's office, or Kim.
I did.
The long answer is we could include those items on our agenda in the future. Is that what you're asking?
Okay, well, yeah, I'm not complaining. I don't mind being here. It happens that we have a meeting at the lodge at 10 o'clock. So I had a motivation to not miss something. But anyway, everything's fine.
Okay.
And I hope that in the future, I feel like somebody from the lodge ought to be here at the time that you're considering that application. And it would be good to know ahead of time.
Process-wise, Kim, does Chris tell people in advance of this meeting that their?
I don't think so, no. But I could certainly post them online and let them know. I mean, hopefully, the applicants have already spent time with Chris because once it gets here, there's really not, I suppose the selectmen could go against what the chief assessor said, but I would never recommend that. So I think that the applicants have already spent time with Chris. They could sit here and listen to either, you know, whatever it is that Chris has said. But hopefully, Howard, that your people have spoken with her because that's the place to be to get an abatement approved.
Then I would urge the selectmen to consider not following her recommendation when the time comes.
Having had that discussion in previous years.
She might grant it. You never know, Howard. Who knows?
Had the discussion this year.
With Chris?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, thanks, Howard. Have a good meeting. Okay, the next item on their agenda is the appointment of a tax collector and deputy tax collector. As you may know, the town clerk is elected, is an elected position, but the tax collector is an appointed position. And we are here to appoint Will Kidder as the tax collector and Diane Butary as the deputy tax collector for the coming year. Can I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Will. What?
Will has no choice. She said, did we ask Will? There's no choice about it.
He had a chance to put his hand up.
Will's fine with it. He just wants people to do a better job writing their checks.
Kim, your report?
Okay, we are working on the list of appointments that I hope you'll be able to take up at your next meeting. Those are the committee assignments, terms that expire in 2024. We'll be getting another municipal matters out hopefully next week to remind people. This year, we have, seems like we have less people interested in a committee assignments than in the past, so I'm hoping to drum up some more. And I know the three of you have always tried to get people to volunteer. So we will be doing that at your next meeting. Your rules of procedure, you all have a copy of that. We re-adopt those each year. So at your next meeting, you can make some changes if you need to. And finally, I met with the New London Hospital ambulance along with the police chief and fire chief and Bill. After a long, many years of no official, formal agreement between the town, they are working to get an agreement with the town, which would sort of memorialize what has always happened, which is the ambulance responding to calls here in New London and the town sending, you know, making appropriation and paying a certain fee each year. Once they get New London's done, they'll go to the other town. So we are working on that. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Kim? BB, do you have any? The next, the next item is our committee reports and reports. BB, do you have anything?
Just a quick update in that the court did issue a stay on the RAN decision, so we're off the hook for the moment. Yeah. And the legislation is still, has multiple bills going through on education funding, so I'm just keeping my eye on it.
Both eyes, please.
Both eyes. Yep.
Janet?
Okay, the planning board met on March 26. Mike Hansen came in with regard to his property. It's at 10 Main Street, directly across from Springledge Farm, and talked about his building that he proposes with, it would be like 40 by 72, 18 parking spaces. There are no water issues there, are sewer issues. And he will have a fire suppression system. He hasn't finalized it because Adam wasn't there. But he has offered to the water precinct the opportunity to park some heavy equipment on that lot because he won't start construction on his building for a while. And whoever's doing the Main Street water line would be able to park some of their heavy duty equipment there. There was a tree cutting at 782 Pleasant. Sue Stubner appeared before the board and with regard to a sign, post, hopefully a sign approval for Kessley Fields, which was approved. And then that was it. There was a brief discussion about solutions for affordable housing and the planning board's going to think about that more this year. They realized that what was proposed was not accepted. I also had a fireworks meeting and Jay said that they sold Engine 2. They received $18,200, which will go back to the general fund. They're having some location issues with software with regard to dispatch, which I know the chief is aware of, I guess. Have they worked out some of the bugs or?
Oh, yes, we have.
Okay. That was one thing that he said, that, you know, people were being sent to the wrong location. Not entirely. I think this has to do with their active 911 notifications. Right, yeah. Yes, so people weren't being sent to the wrong locations. We had to make sure that the new software married up correctly with the active 911 bugs. And I worked tirelessly to get that fixed. I'm happy to report it is fixed. Yeah, oh, good. So everybody's going to the right spot. All right. And then he said, starting early Thursday morning, they'd had over 20 calls for service. There was a tractor trailer off the road. 478 people were out of power. And they were out basically 24 hours with the snowstorm. And I'm sure the police were as well. I'm sure they had a lot of things. So that's about it. it.
Okay, Kim's already mentioned the meeting we had with the hospital on the ambulance. I've attended the water precinct meeting on the first Monday of the month. The meeting was almost entirely devoted to discussing their financing on the Water Main project. I had a call from Joe Hogan, the president of Continuum, who informed me that he is going to be closing on the land on County Road that he had acquired from the Beale People, and that we should remove that land from consideration for a future facility for the, for the town. He also, while I was on the phone, told me that they've had successful water tests on New London Place and that they should be proceeding with the Department of Environmental Services as quickly as possible to, on the next steps on the New London Place project. Anything else? Okay, so minutes of March 21st, our last meeting.
I move that we approve them. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, upcoming meetings, our next meeting is Thursday, April 18th at 5:30 here. The Planning Board on April 9th, Janet referred to the things that have been moved forward to that meeting from the last Planning Board meeting, Energy Commission, Housing Commission, Conservation Commission, all have upcoming meetings. I'll just note that after our meeting on the 18th of April, Thursday here, for the months of May, June, and July, we will be having our meetings on Wednesdays. So for those of you who plan ahead and didn't hear my comment earlier this morning, that all of our meetings are now posted on the website, be aware of the fact that after the April 18th meeting, our meetings will move to Wednesday night for the summers. Any other business to be brought before this meeting? Okay, we will sign pay vouchers and so on, and that'll be it for the day. Thank you all for coming or staying.